Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. This is the June 25th Regular Business Meeting of the Sandwich School Committee. It is being broadcast live on livestream on www.SandwichTV.org and Sandwich Community Television Channel 8. We'll begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. First event of the evening is our first public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward for a public forum? Seeing none. Moving on. Review and act on the meeting minutes of our regular business meeting of June 11th, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes as presented from June 11th, 2025.
Motion by Ms. Benenda, seconded by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. No opposed, no abstentions. Passes unanimously, 7-0. Next up, correspondence and announcements. I have none. Does anybody's got anything? It's my kind of meeting. We're moving fast. Number six, superintendents update.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Happy summer. I think the first issue that we have is we've got our athletic director, Sean Beneden, to come up and to give a concise update of the spring of sports, which you were able to be successful.
Good evening, everyone. How are we?
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. So, I put this together and tried to have a bit of a spring/summer theme there with the blades of grass there in the background. But what a spring, awesome spring. I saw many of you out there. We had every team make it into the postseason. All teams that were eligible, both as team and individuals, made it to the postseason, which was really cool. Speaks to, you know, the athletes themselves, speaks to the coaches, to the faculty, to all of the parents in the community at large in terms of the support for our student athletes. So, just a great, a great spring. They made it through the cold and the rain there at the beginning, and then they proceeded to do really, really well. So, a couple of highlights. Girls Lacrosse made it to the Final Four. Awesome run by Coach Beaton and her staff with those girls. They're just, they're tremendous, tremendous athletes. So many of them are multiple, multi-sport athletes. Just as I'm looking in the front there, there's, you know, Emma Itrie, who's playing two sports in the Darmans, and Avery Cobbin, and Elizabeth Stutzman, and so many of them that are multiple sport athletes. So, they played an awesome year, had a tremendous season. Then the Boys Baseball Team, Coach Thomasini, awesome run with them. They made it to the Final Four. They lost at Durfee High School in an unbelievable, unbelievable game. But that was quite an experience, and they have practically everybody coming back next year. And then our Unified Team, which was amazing. Yeah, our Division II State Champs, Unified, so Coach Young, and there's, that's some of the crew. And that Trevor Haas, who does an amazing job with high school athletics, had done an article about them, so that was taken from the Globe. So, those are just some of the major highlights. Here's what our participation numbers look like. Well, just up to the top, there's our Girls Tennis Team, Coach Trimble, our Coach Batista, and the Softball Team. And then Jeannie and I with Lexi Eastman and Adam Ferrera, after they were named as the, our representatives for the Scholar-Athlete of the Year Award for the South Shore League, which was a great, a great night. So, kudos to them. Our numbers for participation, we were at about 38% of our student athletes, students participated in a sport for the, for the spring, which was basically the same number as what we've had in the past or what we had last year. 63 students between middle and high school for baseball. That was, we had all three levels going there. Softball had a middle school JV team, and then we had the high school team. Track and field numbers were at 55. Tennis for the Boys was at 16. Tennis for the Girls, 14. Sailing was at 8. Big numbers in lacrosse. Boys, 64. Girls, 70. And Unified Track had 21, which is, again, great numbers, great participation for, for a school of our size, I think. Highlights?
Real quick, go ahead.
Good, Kev.
Just softball. That's like double from last year, isn't it?
Yeah. That's, yeah, awesome job. And they're, they're super young. Coach Batista's done a great job with them. A ton of really good, good feeling, good vibes out in the softball field. New dugouts that were put up by the facilities crew. Bill McLeod and his group did an awesome job. Hoping to get some, I want to fix the scoreboard that's out there, but that's probably a conversation for another day. But, yeah, really good numbers there for softball.
Last question there, sorry. I know sometimes, victim of our own success, we have challenged getting opponents at, you know, I know like in basketball, not my team, other towns had freshman basketball teams, so we're scrambling. How was that in the spring? Did we have any issues, or was scheduling easier for you?
No, it was, no, I'd say it was, it was pretty consistent across the board. Baseball did an interesting, Brian did an interesting thing with, with his group where he had a group that almost would be considered like a instructional group that he, they didn't have games per se, but they went out three or four days a week and they practiced. And he practiced with them, and he had his guys, his varsity guys out there with them. So, it was for, I'm sorry, they did, they did have some quote-unquote "middle school" games. But it was just a great chance for them to see what a varsity practice would look like, for them to work with the team, to work with the, with the varsity coach. So, that was kind of neat, and that was kind of eye-opening for me of like, maybe that's another alternative for some of our programs if they not, if they don't have a full schedule. Can we do something that's more instructional in the sense of they're getting out there for an hour every day, they're practicing, they're doing something. But no, it was, it was, it was pretty relatively easy, I'd say, to, to get games. Obviously, at the subvarsity levels, you'd like to get a lot more, but I think we did pretty good.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
You can move to the next slide now.
So, highlight, again, Unified Track, D2 State Championship. Amazing, amazing experience for, for them. And as you know, if you've been to those, it's, I think it's something for all of us as parents, coaches, athletes, to see just the exuberance just in the experience. There's no focus on the end result. It's just the, the idea of being out there and competing, which is the big message. Baseball, 15-game winning streak, put them right into the Final Four. That was amazing. Softball, kind of speaking to what you were saying, Kevin, of from 2-16 the year before to 11-9, beating teams that they had lost to by double digits the year before, and making it into the tournament. I don't know what the number is. Some people had said it was maybe 10 years or so, first time they had been in the tournament. I'm not exactly sure, but, and again, they have everybody coming back, which is great. Girls Lacrosse is, you know, the girls and boys lacrosse, I think when you hear Sandwich Athletics, those are two of the teams that sort of come to the forefront of everybody's mind. Again, a great year, difficult schedule. They played Notre Dame of Hingham. They're playing some real top-notch, non-league teams, which will continue when we go back to the Cape and Islands. And Boys Lacrosse, lost an All-American goalie, and still Mike did a great job of getting them into the tournament. So, their height, their strength of schedule got them, got them in even though they were under 500. Girls Tennis, Coach Trimble got them in. They had an interesting trip up to Newburyport, where they're supposed to play outdoors, and then it rained, so they moved, they moved the match indoors. Those are Friday afternoon, so they have a solid group coming back next year. Boys Tennis, Coach Jeff Carter, a ton of seniors on that team. So, we'll see what happens with, with getting some new recruits out there for, for tennis. Working on netting to prevent those softballs from going onto the tennis courts. So, that's something that's definitely on my mind. Track and Field, huge numbers, again, up in the 50s, which is great for a school our size. Couple individual achievements, Adam Ferrera, who we know from his exploits on the football field, then just hopped over to Track and Field, and D5 Champ in the Javelin. Girls Relay, Grace, Chania Grace Smith, Annabelle, and Ashlyn White, and then Mia Mulcahy, placing eighth in the Javelin. So, those are amazing finishes, again, considering the competition. And Sailing, Coach Watson and Coach Pierce, just two coaches that absolutely get it. They're super positive. They're literally out there on the water with the kids, so their record may not have been what they would want it to be, but they, they persevere, they, they get through it all, and just a great group of, of kids. I think that's it, Joe. Yeah. Any questions?
Just a question. Well, it was kind of an omen when the girls went to Newburyport, and they were supposed to play outside, but they actually had an indoor facility available, so the girls went in saying, okay, they have an indoor facility and an outdoor facility.
Outdoor, yeah.
But they played well.
Yeah. It was a pretty cool experience.
Their number-one singles is playing at University of Colorado.
Yeah.
So, we faced some stiff competition, but held their heads up high.
Yeah. It was a great experience for them to get indoors.
It was good. Question for the Fall, where we're moving back to the Cape and Islands League. The schedule's pretty much set now already?
Yep. So...
How does it look? Is it...
It, I mean, travel-wise, it looks great.
It looks great.
Yeah, it looks great. We, I think I need to get two more boys soccer games at the varsity level, and then the whole varsity schedule will be done. And then it's a matter of working for your subvarsity games and figuring out how many levels we'll have, how many levels the other schools will have, and then putting in those JV varsity, JV freshman and middle school games. But, yeah, that was, it was relatively, relatively seamless in terms of moving back.
And when we've been in the South Shore League the last few years, we had a little bit of difficulty at those subvarsity teams. And we, I think we played a lot of the Cape and Islands.
We did, yeah.
Already.
Yep.
So, we probably shouldn't have a problem.
I don't think so, especially at the, like, middle school, boys and girls soccer. I got, I think, eight or 10 games in a couple of days. So, I think we should be good there.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Later, we're going to discuss sports fees. Do you have any opinion on fees?
Yeah. I think, so, in my experience thus far, I found it interesting that, looking at the varying amounts that different towns and different schools are paying, or different families, I guess I would say. And there doesn't seem to be like a rhyme or reason as to why one town is, is paying more than another, or why some students in some towns are paying more than another. I think the, the idea of that money being used as, or trying to figure out the, the revenue stream in order to support the, the teams, I think is a, is a big part of it. Trying to figure out what the number is that best is palpable for families, while also making sure that kids aren't being left out, which I think is, is a huge, is a huge part of it. So, how can we make it, make it so that we're sustaining the programs that we have? Because I think that's one of the things, is trying to, trying to look at what, what we do as a town and what we're offering our, our students and our student athletes. It's hard to get into the comparison game, because every town is different, every athletic department is different. The number of teams that they're putting out there is, is different, their travel costs are different. So, I think if we're looking at what's, what do we think is best for the, the students, student athletes, and the, the kids that are going to be on our teams, I think if as long as that's the, the focus, then I think we're heading in the, in the right direction.
If I must ask, for Cape Tech, do not charge fees. Do you have, should we be charging, should we be charging fees? Those, those three programs do not charge their kids, and do you have an opinion about that?
Yeah, I, without knowing the ins and outs, I, I guess my question would be was where, where is the funding coming from then for...
Well, the funding might be coming from the same place that we, for example, if we have a chemistry teacher, an English teacher, a social studies teacher, those people are tested, are funded from the taxpayer. I imagine since you're here, you must consider sports important.
I consider them very important, yeah.
It's very important. So, it's, it's kind of a basic, a basic, because kids, do, what percentage of kids in the, in the school participate in any sport?
So, it has to be, I'm, I'm going to say on average, high 30% to 40%. So, you know, 40% of the kids are participating at least in one, one activity. That's not even taking into account clubs, which also, you know, we have a, a cost for those, for kids to participate in those clubs as well.
We don't charge kids for gym during the day, and that's, they play, they do play sports.
Right. I guess maybe because that's a, that's a requirement, right?
Right. That is a requirement. Playing, playing baseball or lacrosse, I happened to meet one of your lacrosse students at an ice cream spot on Sunday, and she was very, they were very excited about, about playing in Sandwich. They both, my daughter said to me, how did you know they were from Sandwich? And I said to her, well, they're both wearing Sandwich shirts. That might be...
Yeah. Yeah. I, I guess it's, I just kind of look at it from the, the perspective of what's, what's putting our, our kids in the best position in order to still compete at a, from an athletic perspective, at a high, at a high, at a high rate. I guess the other part, too, speaking as a, a parent who's had kids play sports and participate and pay youth league fees and pay for things like AAU, which are in the, the thousands. You know, like, it's, it, it wouldn't be crazy to think that a family who has a, a student playing summer baseball or summer basketball could be spending upwards of $10,000, just in terms of the, the travel.
We're charging our kids, if I'm correct on the, on the data, we're charging our kids about $144,000, which is not a whole lot, not a whole lot of money, especially compared to, what is the budget? 40 million?
40 million.
40 million, $40 million. So, you know, do we, you know, when I was in high school and back when we had chisels to write, we didn't, we didn't charge, we didn't charge for sports. And I'm wondering why, why we do, why we're doing that, especially since we have two neighboring towns not charging, and a vocationals. I don't know if the Upper Cape charges, but I know Cape Tech does not.
Yeah, I know, I know in speaking with, the Almath, I think it's a part of their town, like a line item in their town budget, I believe. And then Mashpee, I think a lot of theirs comes from outside, outside resources, I believe, to pay for theirs. And I know Nauset has theirs through their all-sports boosters. That's how that gets paid.
Nauset doesn't have any fees for kids either.
Right. But they are being contributed by the, the people that are in the, in the town whose kids play sports. That money is being sort of, I think, all pooled, and then that covers the cost of the, of the students. So, there's still money being put in by, by the parents, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Sean. Thanks for all you do.
Don't worry.
And we'll look forward to seeing you in the fall.
Thank you all.
Next up is the 2024-2025 District Action Plan Progress Update.
Okay. Thank you. You have in your packet kind of the updated district action plans, and in the far right, kind of an update of the status. Now, I realize there's a lot here. This is 19 pages worth of action plans. So, I'm going to spend the next about hour going through these next 52 slides, okay? Just a joke. I only have eight. Come on. But again, the really, again, the, the action plans that you approved back in September had five focal areas, engaged learning, inclusive practices, optimal learning environment, which really kind of was all-encompassing, but with a large emphasis on our safety measures that we're putting in place, customer service and communication, which I think, as I always refer to, is kind of the perpetual goal, and then sustainability, which kind of really speaks to how do we keep things going from a financial standpoint. So, the first area, in very broad terms, anything that you see with a green check kind of represents kind of completed initiatives. I think we've done a lot of substantial work with regard to curriculum implementation. Again, the, the new literacy program, ARC and Ready Math are now Year Two. Something that I'm going to be talking about a little bit more, but at Forestale, K through 2, we implemented a new program called UFly Foundations, which is essentially a really core, solid phonics program. I think a lot of work has been done, and I, I think both Dave Quinn and Jen Kirk deserve a lot of credit for the work that they do with regard to PD, and specifically around deeper learning, and how do we bring out that deeper learning in students, as evidenced by, again, Year Two of the Deeper Learning Project Showcase. Some of the work that I think is ongoing is, again, more consistency in using data, and again, not just by the admin team, but by teams of teachers. And we have, we've probably never had a greater amount of data at our disposal, but how are teachers working on a regular, ongoing, consistent basis to make sense of all of it. As far as the next steps, and this is what you'll see in next year's, action plans really is, again, continued support for the Innovation Career Pathway Program at the middle high school. The second piece around inclusive practices, I think some significant progress has been made with regard to PD around culturally responsive practices, and something that I'm going to talk about in my own goals for next year, will be how we're going to wrap that in the educator evaluation process. We, towards the end of the year, did PD around co-teaching and ensuring that it's more consistent across the grade levels, but then also publishing district-wide expectations of what co-teaching should look like. So, I think we need to do more work with regard to publicizing it and being more explicit across the grade levels. And then I anticipate BJ McNamara will come before you, probably in the early fall, with an update to our district-wide bullying prevention plan. Okay? Third major focal area, again, the optimal learning environment. I think Bryce Harper, again, deserves a ton of credit for the work that he's done with regard to safety enhancements. We talked through the budget process about upgrades in our security camera system, but also different tools, various apps that are being used, so that classroom teachers or anybody in any classroom can be alerted in the event of something like an intruder or some type of an emergency. We had a lot of success at the end of the year with three successful evacuation and reunification drills at all three schools. Bryce also, and his staff, have done a lot of positive work with regard to cybersecurity training. However, in looking at some additional upgrades in classroom designs, but also there's a piece in the plans around audio, as far as ensuring every single classroom is, has a FM system, because there's a significant body of research that shows that FM systems are obviously effective for students with central auditory processing delays, but quite frankly, for all students, and for that matter, for all adults. So, that's something that we're also aggressively pursuing. Next steps, you'll see in next year's planning. We've already started initial conversations about what drills we will be planning, kind of going back to some of the Alice basics, but maybe more evacuation of the school, looking at specific rallying points. And then the finishing of both the classroom door lock and security camera upgrades. The fourth, again, communication and community engagement. I feel like this school year, we had a very robust strategic planning process involving all stakeholders. It's the game plan to present a draft version of the final plan to this committee during the workshop on July 29th. We had an opportunity to administer a family-school relationship survey to our students, at least middle high school students, and also to families. At that same July 29th workshop, we'll also share the results of that as well. Again, the annual report, that is on my to-do list for this summer. And again, the next steps, as we've always talked about, is using this coming first semester to promote and widely publish our five-year strategic plan, and making sure that that's not only going out to families within the district, but also for larger-town publication. And then last but not least, sustainability and facilities. Really, I, I think we're making good progress with regard to the capital projects identified. Again, the flooring, the security upgrades. We have commenced the HVAC project at Oak Ridge. It started last week, as did the lock project. Again, funding continues to be an issue, as we have a lot of projects that need additional funding. However, the next steps will be to work with the town and execute a proposal for a facilities assessment study as the first step. So, kind of the, the path moving forward is to continue the momentum that we have on our curricular upgrades, professional development, and inclusive practices. Those I consider as far as teaching and learning are big three. Using our new strategic plan as the blueprint, all of our district improvement plans and school improvement plans, we'll be using that as kind of the foundational piece for '25, '26, moving forward. As we've talked about many times, having a master plan to secure additional funding for our many unmet capital projects and safety improvements, and then also address some of our delayed initiatives, particularly around classroom design, and what is the ideal design as far as furniture upgrades. But when I will be talking a little bit later about my own personal goals for evaluation, I will talk about kind of a, a universal communication platform known as Parent Square that we will be migrating to over the summer. So, that's it. Very, very quickly, in eight slides. If you have any questions on any of those action plans, more than happy to answer them.
Dr. Miller?
Just a couple, and not necessarily to answer tonight, but in updates over the course of the next academic year. We started out this academic year with a, statewide, with a tremendous emphasis on reading, literacy.
Mm-hmm.
We're now fully implemented with the program. It would be interesting to hear qualitatively, as well as quantitatively, what's the feedback, what's the response. I'm not just talking MCAS scores.
Yeah.
But on our internal assessments, that would be helpful. And then, I was trying to remember how long we've been, we've had the co-teaching model in Sandwich. And I'm not sure, I'm either fully cognizant in what that is.
Okay.
What it aims to do, how we measure outcomes, not just for students on IEPs, but students in the general student population. And as we think about budget, you know, it must cost. And so, I'm not asking us to go backwards, but just for the general public, for us to demonstrate the impact that has had regarding the dollars invested.
Great points. To my knowledge, I believe it started prior to the pandemic.
Right. When BJ McNamara started.
Yeah. And I think you ask a lot of wonderful questions, and I'm, I have a high degree of confidence, we have a lot of data, both qualitative and quantitative, that speaks to your questions.
And then the other question I had, or I was intrigued by, is one of the elements... by, is one of the elements that you're looking at, non-evaluative feedback tools for classroom observation, and my-
Around co-teaching.
Around co-teaching. So my thought was, are you envisioning this by managers, by administrators, or peer?
Could be both.
Okay, because my, I've had experience with peers doing that kind of process, which has been tremendously useful to both the, both peers.
Yeah, and I think probably initially it would be BJ as the Director of Student Support Services, but each of our buildings has a special education coordinator who acts, for all intents and purposes, in an administrative role, however, they are part of the Teachers Association. So I think that was part of the rationale of being explicit, that this is to see how well both regular and special educators, classroom teachers and special educators, are meeting the expectations for co-teaching.
Great, thank you.
I don't know if this is a question to be answered now or another, but similar to what Sue was mentioning, is the coaching model that's in place, and is that directly related to co-teaching, or?
We have coaches both at Forest Dale and Oak Ridge, and I think that their role is really around providing support for the implementation of both the literacy, the math, and the science programs. The inbox is always full. You have before you in the packet the handbooks for the revisions, proposed revisions that were discussed at the last meeting for Forest Dale and the middle high school. Please realize there are no proposed changes for the Oak Ridge School. I believe, and I want to thank Jeannie, we made a change, and I believe what is in your packet now, if you look at it electronically, I know that there was a commentary about some confusion, to make sure that things were struck through, that were deletions, I think it just formally in red said delete. So I think it should be pretty explicit based upon that feedback.
While Bert is filing, finding his space, I just want to thank for the extra context around restorative justice, restorative, I don't want to say discipline because it's not, right? The notion of restorative practices around student behavior issues. I appreciate that, it was very helpful.
Thank you for that, because sometimes we assume that everything is transparent and people understand a lot of what happens in school, so that was very helpful for me as well to kind of be explicit.
It was great.
And I think families will appreciate it as well.
Right, thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Bert, did you have another question, or are you good?
Very short.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just about, for example, an example, I don't know if the index is supposed to be correct, or not the index, the table of contents. It says communications on page 34, and both on the electronic version and this version, it was on page either 36 or 37.
That's right. So none of the formatting has been completed. I'm waiting for approval. Once it's approved, then we can delete what's being taken out, and then we'll reformat, and it will be clean.
I just had a question with the GPA scale, how we discussed about possibly, we have to change the weighting of the requirements. Any word on it becoming retroactive? Can we touch base on this?
So I think what we're going to do is, we're going to convene a smaller committee, which I'd love you and Kevin to be part of. I think there's a bunch of different ways, approaches to do this. Realize there are school districts that have done a change of weightings, and they've had a transition period. So what they've done is, they said, okay, as of the '25-'26 school year, we're applying this new weighting, but we are applying it for only the freshman class coming in and all classes afterwards. There are, you know, one route that you could go is applying it retroactively, as you're talking about. However, realize there are some pragmatic implications with regard to Power School as far as grades being calculated and then kind of archived and kind of locked in. So I've asked Sue Garvey, who's our district data person, who's kind of like the Power School guru, to look at the feasibility of kind of retroactively going in once grades are locked in, because you're talking about this past school year and the previous two school years, to do the recalculation of that. So I'm not saying it's not within the realm of possibility, but realize too, you also have other potential policy implications if you are about to retroactively apply it and you have changing of GPAs. And, you know, for example, implications around National Honor Society or various awards, or, you know, I think the middle high school is up to probably at least five or six different honor societies, correct? So there are implications, and I do think having a small subcommittee, school-based along, you know, with myself and you and Kevin, to kind of weigh all these pieces out would serve us well.
Yeah, I agree. If we could do it sooner.
Sure.
Other than, you know, waiting until August, into our meeting then. Is that something we would vote on tonight, or is something we should come back, return?
So I would say this, as we've had various things come before the committee. If you recall, after the election, we had to have a separate vote to change regarding the competency determination, okay? So these, the beautiful thing is, these documents are online, they are a dynamic document. So I would strongly urge, as presented for both schools tonight, to vote. And if there, you know, we're going to come forward with a paragraph or two to clarify how the changing of the weighting is going to be applied moving forward, we can do so as soon as the next meeting in August.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, I'd be willing to do that, provided we do that August 13th, I'm with Danielle, that we need to do this sooner rather than later. When we did this, I was under the impression it was going to be applied to our current students. I can certainly tell you, haven't been in that, I mean, you were in those meetings too. I think if we, if we only applied this to the incoming freshmen, I think we are somewhat breaking the faith with the kids who really asked for this. So I'm happy to be part of that group that kind of peels the onion back and figure out how to do this. But when I, when I visited the school council meetings, the kids were pretty adamant, and they felt like they were being, their current effort was being undervalued, and I would not want to have to live with that. I don't think we should have to, you know, this year, our incoming sophomores have to live with an old system for three years. I just, that doesn't make any sense to me. So, you know, no objections to this, but this will be on the August 13th agenda of our first meeting to update, because if we're not going to do it, we are going to have to put clarification, because if we prove this as written, as presented tonight, everyone's going to think this is the scale for their kids, because nobody else is going to, most parents aren't reading to the background. So.
Well, so I see this as there's three different approaches that you could do this. There's one, the way that you're suggesting that this new weighting be applied to retro, retroactively for next year's seniors to three years' worth of grades. So that's one approach. The second approach could be applying it to freshmen in all classes afterwards, and you keep the, you know, the previous system for all of the other classes. Or the third system would be, you know, what you've described, Kevin, as a hybrid system, where this new weighting applies to all students, starting with the '25-'26.
I would not want that, I think that's confusing. But we would have to explain and be very explicit in our handbook for every parent. If we don't retroactively, we're going to need to have clarification for the next three years in our handbook, that we have two systems.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's going to be a point of confusion for parents.
For parents.
But, I mean, we can dig into it and bring a final solution back to the full committee in August. Do you think, whatever we do should be simple and easy to understand for our families and our kids.
Whatever it ends up being, I think a point, another point, if we're going to make certain things retroactive for GPA calculation, I think we should probably consider some type of standard when a major change such as that is going to be made, there, we figure in, in policy, the timeline in terms of how such retroactivity would work.
How long, yeah.
Because we can't just do this when a group of students or parents or whomever, I don't have a horse in this race anymore. So obviously, when my kids were in school, it probably would have meant much more to me. My point is, maybe at the same time you're considering that, is how do we deal with retroactivity on major policy changes similar to these?
Okay, Tracy?
What I'm wondering, and Jeannie and Jo, a question is, so when this was written as is now, what was the reasoning to not do some of these other options that we're talking about? Like, why, why wouldn't we have been thinking retroactive, or? I'm just wanting your perspective on why, why are you recommending it like this?
I think we, I think we, we need to go very methodically forward for lots of reasons that have been presented. The discussions did come up in the school council, because we collected feedback from parents and from current students about the old GPA scale and how they felt about it. And then we compared, as you know, like several school scales, and we finally landed on the state to adopt the Massachusetts State GPA scale that is used for recalculating transcripts. So part of that conversation, our focus was the scale, to choose a more equitable scale, which is how the kids saw it. And then part two, there were comments about how will this work? And given like the storing of grades, historical grades, and a transcript and the data, those conversations never came to full fruition, and we are researching, because we're trying to collect, other schools have done similar things, and we're researching to see what is the best implementation policy and which is the most equitable.
Thank you. Because if we keep it at this standard, how if we change it, and that we have kind of two scales, like the this year's seniors, like when they're applying to colleges, their GPAs may not be accurate, right? We'll have two different standards that they're going by. How does that work when applying to colleges?
Well, I could counter with, the overwhelming majority of colleges recalculate the GPA anyway, because all different, the applicants are coming from different districts and so on. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I just, it's just, it's just, when we voted on discussing it, I, we were, I think a few of the members were under the impression it was going to be retroactive. So it was kind of, it was almost a little shock, the last, the last meeting. So I look forward to sitting down and talk about it. I mean, we're always touting sandwiches, you know, with our academic rigor, and we're encouraging our students to take these AP courses, the honors courses. So I think they're, they should be afforded the right, you know, to a fair grading system. So I look forward to meeting.
Okay.
Just the only thing I would throw into that is that obviously going retroactive is appealing to the students, that it benefits, but obviously is, is in its own way unfair to the students that it disadvantages. And we, and obviously, I think this system is more fair going forward, but to make it retroactive, you have students that did make certain decisions under the impression that the grading scale was one thing, and to kind of have that switched out in a way that disadvantages them may also create some pushback. I just, I think that if you only are considering the kids, that this is going to help, you know, who have taken, you know, maybe more rigorous classes, like I just, I think there's pushback available in another way. So I do see why going retroactive isn't necessarily a no-brainer, there's, it's kind of-
Yeah, well, it is, where there's kids taking CP classes, and there's kids taking honors and AP classes, I mean, there's a definite, a different, different standard, for sure. So, you know, and I've seen kids, like grad, a few graduating seniors this year, that should have been in the top 20, but they weren't. And, and, you know, they worked really hard, and they deserved it. So I see it, but you, if you want to push yourself, you take the honors and the AP classes, you should be, you know, have a fair grading scale, you know?
And that makes sense going forward, just changing the order back, I can see how much anybody pre-concentrated about that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Why don't we do separate motions with each handbook separately, just so it's clean for the minutes? So entertain a motion for Forest Dale.
I make a motion that we approve the Forest Dale Student Handbook for '25-'26 school year.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, seconded by Mr. Fisher. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. And for the Sandwich Middle High School?
I make a motion that we approve the Sandwich Middle High School Student Handbook for '25-'26.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, again, seconded by Mr. Fisher. Any further discussion? Just that, we are going to revisit this, we're going to have this small group, and we'll bring final solution to the committee in-
Entered into the-
We can meet prior to July 3rd.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes.
You want to amend your motion to include that we were going to revisit?
Okay, yes, yes. I'm going to amend the motion that we revisit this in our August 13th meeting.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, seconded by Mr. Fisher. I almost call you Mrs. Fisher. Any further discussion?
Just a question to clarify, so are we voting to, we're going to accept it as is?
But we are acknowledging, we are acknowledging that we're going to revisit this in August.
Okay, so what happens, does this go, like families see what we're seeing here, and then it's-
Yeah, it will be posted to the website as it typically is, but again, it's posted as a Google Doc, so as a result, it can be changed very, very quickly prior to the start of the school year.
And all the other changes are applicable, so.
So the plan would be, we'd have it all done by August 13th? With the retro spelled out.
Or whatever the way forward is, yes.
Those early decision people get moving very early.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven-zero. Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Next up is the July School Committee Workshop schedule.
There were no changes-
No changes for Oak Ridge.
Yeah, no changes at Oak Ridge.
So they're just going to change the date, we'll So, they're just going to change the date, we'll let them do that without a vote. July School Committee Workshop Schedule, without looking at my calendar, remind me what date it is?
Tuesday, the 29th of July.
Tuesday, 29th of July, does that still work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I think the plan is, the strategic plan.
Yes, and 6:00 PM, pizza, salad.
High school?
High school.
High school library.
That work for everybody?
Yeah.
Should I have it on my calendar?
6:00 PM.
I'll send an invite to everybody.
Yep, no, I got it. All right. No vote required there. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none. Next up is new business, approval of Sandwich Public Schools' activity athletic fees for fiscal year '26.
So, you have, in the packet, a couple different documents. There's one that's kind of a summary of the Oak Ridge Clubs, and the data around student participation, and the fees that were brought in, and stipends paid out. And then, there's this kind of, this master spreadsheet, that the Finance Subcommittee worked with quite a bit through the budget cycle, that kind of shows the cost per participant for all of our interscholastic sports at the middle high school. Then, there's also a separate tab that shows the clubs that are run at the middle high school. And then, there's also another tab that shows town comparisons, as far as the user fees. So, as I kind of talk about, in the background memo, the proposal that the Finance Subcommittee discussed a little over a week ago, which I also endorse, I think a lot of thoughtful discourse and database discussion went into this, would be to increase the Oak Ridge Club fee from $55 to $90. Keep in mind, similar to the middle high school, this is an all-inclusive fee, so that a student, a family could pay that fee, and the student can enroll in as many clubs as he or she wants. Keep in mind, Oak Ridge runs their structure through kind of like trimesters, fall, winter, and spring, as far as the after-school clubs and activities that do. And they had outstanding participation, a total of 308 students in their after-school club program. So, that represents about 55% or so of the student body, so it was very, very successful. But as I also note in the background notes, the program did run in the red this year, so I think that extra revenue to have diverse opportunities for students, and then, again, also, part of the discussion of the Subcommittee, to have reinvestment in materials and supplies and so on, would be helpful. The second recommendation is to increase the night pass, or essentially, the club fee at the middle high school, from $80 to $125. And again, if you study that spreadsheet, you are looking at, again, it's, it's the FY24 data, but the clubs, overall, if you look at the FY24 data, it ran in the red about $16,000. So, that is between the stipends being paid and what the contribution is out of the operational budget. So, the increase of $45 for all participants is to help close that gap. The third recommendation is to increase the sports user fees right now, and I spoke to as many people as I could. The conventional wisdom is, this community, our district, has not changed user fees probably since the early 2000s, if not the late 1990s. So, it's been a really, really long time. Right now, we have a user fee of $150 per sport, with a family cap of 600. The recommendation is to kind of have two parallel moves, of increasing that user fee to $200, so an increase of $50, with the family cap up to 800. As I, again, put in the background notes, if you look at the cost per participant, you know, we've got a wide gap from $237 per participant for middle school girl soccer, to a Heron, or 2,000, 1,950 for boys hockey. So, sports can be very, very expensive, but also, in looking at what comparable communities charge, I think the increase of $50 per sport is pretty reasonable, and it would put us kind of somewhere near the middle of the pack, as far as what user fees are. I think part of the discussion that I really would like to highlight, that the Finance Subcommittee had a little over a week ago, was really around the core value of participation, okay? Three times a year, Shaun comes before the school committee, has three or four slides to talk about the highlights, but the slide that he always leaves with are the actual data around participation. I can tell you, as a former high school principal, having upwards of 40% of your kids participating in athletics is outstanding. It really is. And, you know, we, we've made decisions as a school committee and as an administration that we really don't put a lot of restrictions. Somebody could look at this in a very black and white way and say, "Eight kids in sailing? Why are you running sailing? That doesn't make any fiscal sense." Well, I can tell you, we run sailing, because that is a really meaningful program for those kids and their families. So, it becomes challenging, you know, with decreased enrollment, but we do extremely well, as far as giving kids a venue to connect and to have a strong sense of belonging. So, really, that core value of keeping a very healthy and vibrant athletics program really was kind of the lead of the discussion of the Finance Subcommittee. So, again, I don't think anybody likes to see any user fees go up, but kind of balancing it with the stressors that we face with the operational budget, I think these fee changes are very moderate and reasonable.
First, we'll go to Dr. Miller, who's the chair of the Subcommittee.
When we started this conversation, we were really glued to the chart that showed the differing cost per student. And, pretty quickly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Subcommittee members, we kind of moved away from this notion of, the hockey players cost more per student, so that they should be charged more per student, and some towns do that. The value of the program, as a core value, is the value of being a member of a team and all that that encompasses, in terms of actual hard, physical skills, and all the soft skills that come with being a team member. So, we moved off that, pretty quickly. And then, just move to, what would be a reasonable attempt to close the gap, but not overwhelming? And another thing that I thought about, there's been a lot of information in the news about families are so involved in club sports, traveling teams, all that. It costs an enormous amount of money, as Mr. Donovan pointed out. I worry about what our price point might be, where a family would say, "Well, I'm not going to bother, we're not going to bother with, as a family, with the local district team, put our effort and our resources into the traveling team." Because, when you think about the impact of the district teams, for good or for bad, for being out there and competing, that's a community benefit. So, just to consider that in your deliberation.
If I may, just real quick, and I'll go to you, Bert. Share what Suda said, you know, in many of those club and AUs, they don't normally run during the high school season, so like, AU basketball does not run during the winter, because they don't want to compete with the local schools. As part of the Subcommittee, you know, and I think we've talked in the past about how, in a perfect world, we wouldn't charge any fees, but I don't think we live in that perfect world. And when I look at how much we bring in, you know, to close that gap, we're talking, it's other things we are not doing in the district, and we have very aging infrastructure. You know, there's other needs that we have to balance, so. And just the last caveat is, I know we, I know lunches are free, but anybody who would normally traditionally qualify for free lunch based on income, these, these fees are waived. We've always done that, we would continue to do that. Mr. Fisher?
Falmouth, Mashpee, Cape Tech, as I mentioned earlier, with Mr. Donovan, do not charge a fee. Did you average zero in with the other towns that are charging fees?
I never did an average.
So, how did you, how did we come to...
You can take, you can take a look at the spread of the different user fees that are in that spreadsheet.
Because those, those towns don't feel they have to charge a fee, and we're not all that different from, I mean, we are different from Falmouth and Mashpee, having something in the Falmouth schools. This certainly is a better syst, this certainly is a better system. We don't charge a fee for kids to take chemistry, or music, or gym. We don't charge kids who need sped help to charge a fee. I think this is a basic need, basic thing that should be, should be covered by the taxpayer. And we are here for the kids, and the kids ought not be charged for something that is so, that 40% of them take, and is very important to the Sandwich school system. So, I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate all sports fees.
Motion by Mr. Fisher. Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion fails.
Okay.
I, the motion fails, because there's no second. I agree with you in spirit, I just, I just don't see how in reality we do that with our current...
It's, the only amount we're paying is, we're charging the kids, 144,000, roughly $144,000, which is absolute peanuts compared to...
To teachers, or it's a lot of infrastructure to our building.
Well, we don't, yes, we, we need to pay the, we need to pay the teachers out of there, but we don't charge the kids to take other, other things that are important as well. Chemistry is important, physics is important, English is important.
I agree with you. I might disagree with you.
So, is sports.
Right.
And we should not, we ought not be charging the kids, and I'm sad that that wasn't even a second, that you want to charge, you want to charge these fees. So, the committee will go on record for supporting these fees, to charge these parents to charge the kids. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
This isn't a closed issue, but we do have a budget for FY26. If we want to revisit this, which I think we are proposing that fees are revisited every year going forward, FY27 is another budget year, and we certainly could look at it in another budget year.
Anyone else? This does require a vote, so I do require a motion, either way.
I make a motion that we approve the increased activity and athletic fees for FY26, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Benetta? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goodwin. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes, and no abstentions, passes 6-1-0. Presentation of an approval of the Superintendent's Annual Plan, 25, 26.
So, you have in your packet what I've, am proposing, as far as goals for the upcoming 25, 26 school year. I think I show this every single year, just like educators across the district, I have the same type of evaluation cycle, however, mine has been on a one-year cycle versus a two-year cycle. So, really, it starts with a self-assessment, and then, it's kind of goal-setting, and the actual plan, which you have in draft form before you. The implementation of the plan occurs during the school year. The mid-cycle goals review is typically done by the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, right before the holidays in December. And then, we've made the summative evaluation to be usually the end of April, to kind of make it coincide with school committee making sure that it's one consistent school committee that's involved. So, really, I have, and again, there's more details, and I'm not going to go through all of the individual steps, but for the superintendent, it is a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and then, three highlighted district improvement goals. So, student learning goal is a little retooled this year, but I think it's very, very timely. This is the second year that Forestale will be implementing the U-Fly Foundations Program, as I said before. It's essentially a core phonics program that teachers give 15 to 20 minutes to per day, and it kind of deals with phonemic awareness, sound blending, sound recognition, how it corresponds to letters and so on, and ensuring that it's implemented with fidelity in kindergarten through two. And the goal would be to reduce the number of students in grades one and two that require intervention through a reading interventionist by 10% in one school year. The professional practice goal is kind of a carryover from this current school year, or the school year that just ended, where additional work to improve the quality of ongoing feedback during classroom observations and summative evaluation. We worked all year with the Joint Labor Management Committee to kind of come to consensus on a updated teacher evaluation rubric, and then also, an observation form. So, a lot of the specific steps of the goal involved implementing that across the district, and the supports that are needed, both to administrators and educators, in moving that forward. As far as the three formulated goals for, or the highlighted district improvement goals, goal number one is implementing a new unified communication platform. I think it was a meeting or two ago, I talked about us rolling out Parent Square, which is a universal platform that families can access all of the information through text messages, through email, or through the Parent Square app, which is fully integrated with our upgraded district website, which we'll be rolling out in the fall. So, it's really about successfully implementing it, and ensuring that that goes smoothly, and that there's a high degree of satisfaction with communication and getting feedback. The second piece, and this really came up a lot in our strategic planning sessions, and this is one that I'm very excited about, is just creating more connections between schools and grades, having more opportunities for our students to connect with each other. For example, in May, there was the science fair at Oak Ridge for fifth and sixth graders, and we had a team of students, one being Shreya, who acted as the judges. Where are there more natural, organic opportunities for our students to connect with older and younger peers? So, there's some specific plans around that. And then, the third, I think is something that's longstanding, but really, it is about having enhanced systems in place to ensure that there's more timely and more efficacious cleaning, but also follow-up on maintenance issues. but also follow-up on maintenance issues across the school. And again, part of the strategic planning process talked about the idea of pride, pride and ownership in our facilities. So those are the three highlighted district improvement goals that I've chosen to be part of my evaluation process. So again, this is also in the document, just thinking about the timeline. And it is a little more compressed for me than it is for the majority of our educators. The self-assessment, the goals being proposed in the plan this evening, the actual implementation plan would start now and go through the end of April. Again, mid-cycles goal review typically is done right around that first week of December and then reported out during our only meeting that we hold during the month of December. And then the target for the summative evaluation would be that last meeting before town meeting and elections in May, which would be April 29th, 2026.
Dr. Miller?
This is awesome. Just thinking ahead to the budget year. The strategic plan should inform the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm thinking about if, if there's a way, when we start to look at the individual school and related budgets, if we can create some kind of coding that would show that this item is in the building action plan, the superintendent's action plan, the strategic plan. I think that will help when we make our case to finance, to selectmen, to say that this is important. And it's important because it was a community effort that built that strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Thinking of that going forward.
Ms. Higgins?
The Parent Square, I was just curious if that is also going to include, like, the special education documents or IEP information? Because right now, it's a separate, we have Power School right now, but then for the, like, my son's IEP information, I have to go to a different website and all three of my boys have IEPs and so I have to log into three different accounts.
Sure, yeah, I believe, yes, the answer is yes, because Parent Square fully integrates with Power School.
Yeah, okay, I just want, yeah, it would be nice to have it all in just that one slate.
All documents, yeah.
And not multiple logins either.
Yeah, and that is the consistent feedback, the multiple logins, but then also if you have two or three kids who have different teachers and they're using different platforms, somebody might be using ClassDojo, somebody is maybe using Remind and so on. We're being very, very explicit to state, "That's not going to happen anymore." "We love that you've been entrepreneurial and you found a wonderful app that you love, but we've got to get everybody on the same page."
Any further discussion, questions or discussion? It does require a motion to approve. Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Ms. Goodwin, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, passes seven zero. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, you'll be heartbroken to know I have none. Subcommittee reports.
The FinCom, result of it was our agenda item, so.
Yeah, we already voted, I'll just go back. I do know in years past, this goes back a number of years, it was before I joined the committee, but I know other, you know, in budget times, there was a consideration of cutting certain sports because of budget limitations. So, you know, and we never wanted to do that. I think these are the fees, you know, personal opinion, I don't like them, I think they're kind of just a necessary evil. Moving on, Liaison Advisory Committee reports. Seeing none. Next up is warrants.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented tonight and signed.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Goodwin, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Six zero one. And next up is public forum, anybody like to come forward to public forum? Seeing none. Moving on, future agenda items. So this would really be for our August 13th meeting. Obviously, we're going to revisit the Sandwich Middle High School handbook. Is there anybody, anything else people would like to raise? Seeing none. Moving on is acknowledgements and closing remarks. Ms. Menendez?
I just have one acknowledgement. This last week, Sandwich lost a native Cape Codder, a Sandwich graduate from the Wing School High School back in the day, at the Wing School, Sandwich High School, Rick Cerodio. Rick was larger-than-life. He was deeply committed to his family, to the town of Sandwich. He had spent many years in New Hampshire, raised his kids, and then moved back to Sandwich where his family is, extended family. And he got the Sandwich Special Olympics, the Sandwich Sailors, he got that ball rolling through Sandwich Recreation and he built it from the ground up. And since his involvement in it, he left such an impact on so many families. He had always had this vision of having an adaptive chorus and he got it up and running and I think it was just the fourth year that it's grown every year. So I just wanted to acknowledge Rick. He was a wonderful human being, most, one of the most kindest, caring people that I've ever met. So I'm thankful that I've, he was part of our lives, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Menendez, anyone else? Ms. Goodwin?
Just to follow up on that, there was another loss in Sandwich of a graduate who, when you said kind, and just a kind-hearted person and family and a proud graduate, I would say, and strong community person and family.
Anyone else? Well, the seniors already graduated, the rest of the kids are, have ended, you know, school's out for summer. This is our last, you know, business meeting of the school year. So I just want to thank everybody for showing up every Wednesday, all the work that happens. It's not just Wednesday nights sitting here, there's a lot of things that go on, prep and research that happens in the various subcommittees throughout the year. So I just want to thank you all for that. Our next meeting will be the workshop on the July 29th. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's business meeting until our July workshop would be, is that part of it, or should, so our Tuesday, July 29th, School Committee Summer Workshop at 6:00 PM.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Goodwin, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Seven fifteen, not bad. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.